I hereby call to order this meeting of the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, December 16th, and the time is 10:02 a.m. With those commissioners that are in attendance, please identify themselves and state as whether they are here in person, via Zoom, or via telephone.
This is Joe Pennington. I'm present via Zoom and telephone.
This is Scott Fletcher. I am also present via Zoom and telephone.
And this is Eric Feinstein, and I am present by Zoom.
Terrific. Welcome.
Welcome.
Let's charge into B, our new business, which is all about you. B1 is new commissioner introduction slash welcome. Mr. Meneses, will you speak to this, please?
Yes, sir. As of December 2nd, we were notified that Governor Ducey has appointed Dr. Eric Feinstein to our vacancy on the commission. Dr. Feinstein is no stranger to this commission. He has worked as a ringside physician for a number of years with us, and he is currently a critical care trauma doctor at one of the Valley's largest hospitals. And so we welcome him to the commission, and we look forward to having a full commission and being able to lean on him and his expertise to further what we are trying to grow here in Arizona.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, welcome. It was a long time coming. Everyone should know, despite his sketchy background and resume, he's a pretty good guy. And he loves these sports, and he's going to do great things, I think, for the commission. So, welcome. We're glad to have you aboard.
I really appreciate it. Really excited to be here, and I've worked with a lot of you over the years. So, being able to, you know, dive in a little bit more into a sport that I love and in a state that I love, I'm really excited for the opportunity and happy to roll up my sleeves and get to work and help out with what needs to be done.
We are so excited to have you. You come at an interesting time, but, you know, I think you come at actually a really good time. If we can sort our way through this minefield of COVID, the commission's in a great spot. We have great people. Everybody's pulling in the same direction, I think. Everyone loves these sports and is doing it for the right reason. So, you're a great addition. Commissioner Pennington, would you like to say something?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I just really want to welcome Dr. Feinstein to the commission. He was very involved very early on in our work to do the concussion protocol, and all of the efforts that he put in and bringing people in from Banner and other places is deeply appreciated. He was active at that point, and I'm sure he'll be an outstanding commissioner.
Perfect. Thank you.
He's already started helping, trying to find, he's already started trying to help find a replacement for his, for his spot as a ringside physician. So, he's already helping out.
All right. Now, we just need some events, right?
Right.
We'll get there. Have faith. Well, welcome. And in these forums, Commissioner, it's important you speak your mind so that everyone knows where you stand, too. So, if you have thoughts, feel free to throw them out, please. We're a three-man band again, which is kind of nice. Commissioner Pennington and I have been running it with two folks, so we're really happy to have you onboard. Let's jump into C, our old business. C1 is the COVID-19 updates. Mr. Meneses.
Yes, so I'm going to share my screen. You should see on your screen the AZDHS website. As you remember, this is something that we had spoken with AZDHS and our chief ringside physician, Dr. Ken Oda, with over the summer back in July. We were determining whether or not we should have kind of established a threshold in which we would suspend events. As you remember, I believe we came up with about 10%. We said that once either ICU inpatient or emergency room data on this website showed at or below 10%, we would hold off on doing events until it came out of 10%. I think we've had some follow-up conversations that we would like to see at least 10 days, continuous 10 days, greater than 10% availability before we resuming, before we resume events again. Looking at this data right now, we're on the ICU tab. As you can see, as of yesterday, we're down to 9% availability. It's been 9% for the last few days, and it was down to 8% on the 12th. And it's kind of pretty much been hovering around 10% since the end of November. That's for ICU. For inpatient, 8% availability right now. Once again, this is another one hovering around 10% for the last several weeks, kind of right around, this one's two weeks for inpatient. And then emergency room has, this is the one that we always see the greatest availability on, but we do see this one is also spiking right now. It is 44% available. As you can kind of see this, it was down here over the summer, up 74% available back in April, and now we're down to 40. So, things continue to, to rise in the valley with COVID cases, and that definitely impacts how we have combat sports here in Arizona, or whether we continue to have combat sports during this time in Arizona. So, that's what I have for the update on COVID-19. I, it kind of ties into item C2, so I will kind of stop for there and see if anyone has any questions on C1 first, or any comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meneses. The projections aren't encouraging either in the near term. And our promoters that are interested in putting on events need, in many cases, months to prepare and roll out, and we just can't give them any guarantees or anything, quite honestly. So, I appreciate how open and transparent you've been about our ability to put on events, just so our promoters understand where we stand. Commissioners, thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd agree with your comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would also agree and would just say that the caution that the commission has exercised in this regard has, I think, been in the short term, I'm sure, difficult for the commission and for the promoters. But in the long term, I think builds a lot of credibility with, with everyone in the state and even nationally, the responsibility that the commission has shown in this regard is really, really important. So, I just would commend the efforts and the caution.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, it's, it's been a terrible year for promoters, for contestants, for the commission. It's just been awful, and I look forward to putting this behind us, but we're not there yet. More to come. Let's jump into C2, the Sweet Science Boxing Event Update. Mr. Meneses.
Yes, sir. As you remember, last month, the commission gave a tentative approval for Sweet Science to hold a private, no-fan-for-bout boxing event for this Saturday, 12/19. The promoter, Sweet Science, was advised that we would continue to track the AZDHS data, and if the data was trending in the direction it is now, that the commission would revoke that approval. As of last week, as of Friday, once it was clear that at least 10 days that the data was going to be where it is, Sweet Science was notified that I went ahead and suspended their, their plans to do their event this Saturday. They had no objections to that. They, too, had been watching the AZDHS data that we had shared, and they were kind of expecting that this was going to go this way as they continued to monitor that progress. They don't have a future date ready yet, but what I would recommend is the commission to go ahead and consider suspending all combat sport events until we can reevaluate this in our January meeting and look at the COVID data. Our January meeting is almost exactly two weeks after, or is anticipated to be two weeks after New Year's. And as you can kind of see, I showed you on some of the data, when we started kind of going in the negative direction, that was about a week or two after Thanksgiving. So, I think that'll help us. If we look at the January 15th meeting to reevaluate, that'll be about two weeks after Christmas and New Year's, when we can kind of, kind of relook at where we're heading, if we're still heading in the negative direction, or if we're starting to trend positively in, in getting more availability. So, I'd recommend the commission consider and suspend all combative sport events for the time being until January.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Commissioners, thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chairman, is our attorney on the line?
Ms. Wagner is on the line.
Yes, I am.
Ms. Wagner, is there any issue if we make a motion to suspend all events? Don't see it on the agenda. That's my only concern.
You can certainly put out there, since "all events" has not been on the, or noticed on the agenda, you can certainly indicate to all present that moving forward, the commission would likely not allow events moving forward. They could certainly have, the commission could certainly have a motion on the Sweet Science event, since that has been specifically agendized. But I would also note that the commission does have the authority over events for the health, safety, and welfare of the boxing industry as a whole. So, you certainly would have that authority to move forward.
In, in the form of a motion or just a consensus?
Since there is nothing on the agenda dealing with all of the events going forward, you can certainly put it out there as a consensus that if there were events that were being brought before the commission, that likely they would not be looked at until at least the January meeting going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I would, I would suggest that the commission not approve, at least severely consider any event requests between now and the January meeting due to the COVID situation that we would really discourage applicants for events, applications for events.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would agree with such. Commissioner Feinstein, are you with us?
Yes, I would also agree.
Okay. I think, I think the numbers unfortunately will take care of themselves, and late December events are going to be unlikely to boot, but I think it's important to let everyone know where we stand, too. I hope and pray we get to where the numbers are good and we can do this, but it's, it's easily going to get us into January before we get close. So, thank you. Mr. Meneses, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we need a motion on C2, since I already kind of gave them a summary, some early suspension for the event. But since it's already on there, if the commission wants to make a formal motion just postponing the Sweet Science event until it can be reconsidered in January, that would, that would probably help.
Okay, thank you. Chair, be open to motion if there is such.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we suspend the Sweet Science event until such time as the COVID situation in the state of Arizona is under control and that they be notified of that suspension.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second, a chance?
Yes, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have three ayes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Let's press on into D, our information reports. D1 is our licensing reports. The following licenses were approved by the executive director from December 15, 2019, to December 13, 2020. First item is amateur MMA athletes licenses, 39. Secondarily is our professional MMA athletes licenses. There were eight of those. There were 48 professional boxing athlete licenses. There are 56 commission officials licensed, and other license issues issued included three announcers, two cut men, eight managers, seven matchmakers, 149 seconds, 28 trainers, two outside sanctioning bodies, and 11 promoters. Mr. Meneses, will you speak to this report, please?
Yes, sir. As you can see, from last year, this is, or in the prior years, this is down. Our licensing for a year is typically around 900 to 1,000 different licenses. This is dramatically down, obviously, because of COVID. We do generally get most of our licenses probably in the beginning of the year, I would say between December and February, and then it usually slows down unless there's people coming in from outside of event, outside of events. Since we haven't had any major events this year that has impacted licensing, since we're talking about licensing, I have followed up with finance. I still haven't heard back, but I will put that forward for next month, once I hear back on the question regarding granting licenses into 2021.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Commissioners, any thoughts or questions?
Mr. Chairman, we have, as everyone knows, suffered substantially through this COVID event. I just want to commend Mr. Meneses for the work he's done in trying to keep those going, as well as licensing all of these various athletes and officials.
Thank you. Let's charge on to item B2, the proposed 2021 commission meeting schedule. Mr. Meneses.
Yep, so you'll see in your packet, there is the anticipated proposed schedule. I do find one error right away. The first one for January 15th, that is actually a Friday. That was a typo. This is our first draft to show you and make sure everyone's schedule looks good. We can finalize this in our January meeting. But other than that being a Friday, every other meeting will be either the first or second Wednesday of the month, and that is keeping with, trying to be close to the racing commission meetings so that we can have access to Ms. Wagner as well. So, we kind of looked at their schedule, what they're anticipating for next year, and we matched that. If you could please, three, look at this, and if you have any scheduling issues that you're aware of ahead of time, please let me know so we can try to update this for our January meeting. And the goal would be to pass this in January as our, as our schedule for the year.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, please do take a look at this, and if there's, if there's trouble on that agenda, let us know. We can push it around if need be, but please do look at it when you get a chance. Item E is our call to the commission, where commission members or the executive director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. I had something I wanted to talk about if I could, Mr. Meneses. Last month, we spoke briefly about the notion of entities putting on unsanctioned events in the state. And I wanted to get further into that, and I just wanted to know what you know, if we know, and dig deeper into that. It's something that can't take place, and we need to pursue, I think, immediately. So, Mr. Meneses, what do you know about this?
Yep, so there has been some talk of illegal unsanctioned events. We are aware of them, and we have began, begun to pass them on to the right people that can help us investigate that and, and stop those kind of events. So, as we learn about them, it's definitely helpful. Some of the names that we have heard associated with these events are names that we are familiar with. And so, we are cautiously proceeding forward and, and making sure that everything is done correctly. Right now, there has been no, no events that we have been able to directly see happening. We are aware of some kind of backyard events or some other underground events, but that is the, the extent of it at this time.
Okay, thank you. As you gather information, whatever it might be, websites, announcements, anything you might know, would you please pass that along to the commissioners, just so we can stay abreast of who's involved and what they're considering?
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. That's what I had to talk about. Commissioners, do you have thoughts, questions you'd like to bring up?
Mr. Chairman, this is just kind of a off-the-top comment. I noticed that we have approximately 19, or, well, the Zoom thing shows 22 participants. I'm sure some of those are the commissioners and Mr. Meneses. But it's just really interesting how we get good participation, a lot of people joining the meetings, far more so than when we did this in person. So, I, I'm not all that enthused with the Zoom technology, but sometimes it really does work. I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, it's definitely allowed us to, to broaden our reach and to let more people attend our meetings. As you kind of pointed out in the past, when we had in-person public meetings, it was kind of often difficult during a week, a workday to have people come up there. Being able to do this online because of the new issues that we're dealing with and the challenges that we've suffered this year, it's allowed more people to attend. So, what we've done is, every time we send this out to the commissioners, Carlo also sends it out as an FYI to our officials and to our outside sanctioning bodies, which is a lot of the people that you see joining in to participate via public today. So, it's great that they're all able to stay informed. I know a lot of our officials that are on this call are wanting to kind of, you know, know also what's going on, because they want to get back to work as well. So, that also is one of the reasons they like to attend to see what's the latest and greatest. So, welcome to those guys and gals participating, and we are glad you guys were able to make it.
Good point, Commissioner. It's, it's great, and it's a big state. Not everybody's in the Phoenix area, for sure. So, this is a great way to attend without driving across the state. Although I'm an old dog, I like to shake hands when I can. It's, it's nice to have as many people in the proverbial room as we can get. So, yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Commissioner Feinstein, anything you'd like to talk about?
No, no, I think the attendance is excellent, and I'm gonna see if I can twist or armbar Dr. Oda into showing up, because I think having our lead physician also here to, to address some of the, you know, medical concerns, which I hope will be a regular part in terms of fighter safety of the meetings, I think that would be helpful as well. So, I'm, I'm excited to, to continue, you know, in this way that allows more participation. I think that that benefits the commission, but also excited to, to be in person downtown when I can and shake your hand once, once you've been vaccinated.
Well, Commissioner, I'm an old man, so I should be vaccinated shortly, right? Isn't that how this is going to work?
And he's got, he's got a Pfizer connection that might help him take a shot.
That gets me nothing. My wife does work at Pfizer, but I think we're last in line for that reason. So, it'll be July, but I look forward to shaking your hand, Commissioner. And I, and I think it is very important to have a medical component in these meetings. I'm really excited to have you as part of the commission. Dr. Oda is always welcome. I, you know, I want to be sensitive to his, his schedule, because I'm sure he's got bigger fish to fry, but the impact of physicians is so critical. When I joined this commission, I was told that our marching orders were twofold. They were to ensure the fairness of these events and do what we could to ensure the safety of the participants. So, having doctors in the room is critical for what we're trying to do here. So, kudos. I'm glad you're here.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, this is Director Vote. May I be heard?
Absolutely. Welcome. Please.
Yes, first of all, let me apologize for my attire. I just got off a virtual staff meeting where it was a ugly Christmas sweater theme. So, anyhow, first and foremost, I just really want to welcome Dr. Feinstein to the commission. Gosh, it seems like so long ago we met, and I just really appreciate you sticking with us through the process and kind of echoing what the chairman said. I mean, couldn't ask for a better addition to the commission right now. So, thank you for raising your hand to serve, going through the whole process and getting on board. We're really happy to have you. And then second, I just want to really thank the commission and the staff for their hard work during this very difficult year. You know, we've, we've stuck with it. You guys have done so much during this very difficult time to make sure that we can move into 2021 in a safe way. And we're just ending this very difficult year with a little bit of hope with that the vaccine's already rolling out here in the state of Arizona. So, thank you all for your, your hard work and, and sticking with us. And regarding the, the virtual formats, this will continue to be an availability, both not only with the Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission, but also with the Racing Commission, because we have had just great participation. So, even if we resume, and when we resume in-person meetings, this will be something that is made available to the general public. So, with that, happy holidays and definitely have a happy new year.
Thank you.
Director, thank you so much. Good to hear your voice. Thank you for what all you did to bring our third commissioner onboard. I think we're far better off to have him with us, and, and it's good to hear from you. It's been a long time. We look forward to that handshake in July, or whenever that takes place.
Absolutely. I think what I'm going to do is sort of change our virtual staff meeting so that, right now, I've, it's been a scheduling conflict, but I think I'm going to move those to either a Tuesday and Thursday to, so I can participate in these more fully.
Fantastic. We look forward to having you. Thanks so much. Mr. Meneses, do you have any thoughts for this portion of the program?
No, sir. I believe we've covered everything that we needed to. Just to address a couple of things that you guys had brought up, Commissioner Feinstein, we are started, we started it this year. We just didn't do it for this month, but we started doing quarterly meetings where we had our chief physician come, our, our chief referee, kind of get a report from them and an update. So, that will start back again in 2021, and that's where we would start having Dr. Oda come, you know, to at least three to four meetings a year with our other chief positions to be able to give an update to the commission. So, we definitely will take care of that starting next year.
Very good. Thank you all. Let's find out what the public has to say. F is our call to the public. Those members of the public wishing to address the commission must attend. I think that goes without saying, and we'd ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Carlo, Francisco, who would like to chat with us?
See, Bob Carmel.
Mr. Bob Carmel.
Yes.
Hi.
Hey, Bob.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Bob Carmel, this is Bob Carmel, United States Muay Thai Association. So, we also had an event scheduled for this weekend, a national tournament, which we postponed back in just about Thanksgiving due to the flare-up and everything. So, we've, we had good protocols, but we saw what was coming. So, we postponed it. So, we postponed this tournament to the last weekend of April. So, it'll be, hopefully, things will be a little better. We all scheduled for the end of July, middle of August. So, everybody's hoping by then we'll be able to put events on again. Until then, we're in the same boat with everybody else. So, that's it.
Hey, Bob, I think that's a good plan to go ahead and push out. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, thank you. You've always, you know, you've always run a tight ship, and we appreciate how thorough you are. And I apologize, we live in this world, but we do. And I, looking forward to April. Mr. Meneses, you were saying?
Sorry, I was just going to say, I think that's a good plan, Bob, to push out that far. That way, we're not kind of doing what kind of Sweet Science had to do is, you know, start planning for an event and then up to, you know, very close to the timeline, you know, pull everything back. So, I think it's good for you to go ahead and plan ahead. That gives you plenty of time to kind of watch this data and make sure that you guys are, are making the, the best decisions for this tournament. With the tournament, you're going to have so many more people coming in and out of the building. So, I think it's even more important that the, the COVID data is in a position that is better for the state overall. So, good, good call on your part.
Thanks, Bob. Who else wants to chat with us?
We have Jason Martinez.
Hello, everybody. This is Jason Martinez with Rough MMA. Good morning, Commissioners, Francisco, Carlo, and everybody else. I hope everybody's doing well. Really quickly, just a brief FYI, we are planning a private pay-per-view event only for, optimistically, for February 13th. I know that Francisco will visit that on the January agenda, so that's a very optimistic timeline for us. But we are initially planning it as a closed, private pay-per-view event only. So, we're fortunate to have some partners onboard that can assist us with that, that venture. So, that's our plan so far, tentatively. I have two questions for everybody that I, I thought one of them was going to be raised today. I already know the answer, because I'm a logical person, but I, I think some people need to hear it out loud. So, my first question is, a lot of fighters have been asking about their medicals. So, you know, a lot of our guys are broke, hard workers, you know, part-time students, et cetera, et cetera. And they got all their medicals done last year in anticipation that something would happen, and, and they got no action. So, some have been asking, will their medicals be allowed to be rolled over? And being a logical person, I obviously don't think that's going to happen, nor would it be safe. But I need to ask a question so I can hear the answer out loud, please, and then I have another question after that.
Sure. So, Jason?
Sure. So, um, Jason, there are, um, exemptions where we can extend the medical examinations. Um, and I'm looking at the statute right now. Um, this may be a good, um, scenario where the commission does extend the medicals for an additional year. Um, but, uh, that is something that would need to be go forth on the agenda for the commission to consider what they are really, um, allowing. Um, these agendas, um, I'm sorry, these, uh, these physicals are the, um, the annual physicals. And there are, um, times where we have given an exemption for, for, for other, um, issues. So, um, if a fighter has not competed and already has a medical done for this year, twenty twenty, um, there may be an opportunity to, to, uh, extend that until twenty twenty-one. Um, I will, uh, put that for the commission, uh, consideration for January.
Thank you very much. My second question.
Jason, you have another question?
Yes, sir. My second question is, so this situation has, um, motivated a few fighters to travel to Mexico to compete in order to get, um, events. So my question to the commission is, um, and I'll do scenarios. So like an amateur fighter who was listed and licensed as an amateur here in, in Arizona, travels to Mexico and ends up fighting as a pro in Mexico. What is the commission's, um, response to that when that fighter is trying to get booked again here?
So only sanctioned, uh, an authorized sanctioning body can turn an athlete pro. And many sanctioning bodies in Mexico do not have that ability. So just because he goes to another country and competes, um, if that country is not a recognized sanctioning body, just because he completes under them as a pro does not turn him, turn him or her pro. They would remain whatever the last, um, authorized sanctioning body had them licensed as.
Okay. And then secondly, with that same scenario regarding medicals. So let's say a fighter was medically cleared here, went to Mexico, fought about Mexico and then came back here. Are you still honoring their medicals or is that going to be a situation where that fighter needs to get cleared again?
Yep. So that would go back to what we put out a couple of years ago when I came on is that if anyone competes in an unsanctioned show, their medicals are invalidated. We cannot verify what has happened or who they competed against and that the tests are, you know, we're, we're checking for, for blood, for, for communicable diseases. We, we don't know what these other countries or other sanctioning bodies, um, are, are, are not testing for. So we still stand by that. If someone that we learn, uh, is competing on an unsanctioned show, we will invalidate their medicals and they will have to have all new bloodwork and medicals.
Okay, thank you. That, I was mainly asking for clarification and there was some information that I just didn't know. But I appreciate the information because that's going to help me when I'm talking to them as things are coming back together.
No worries.
Very good, Jason. Thank you. Um, excited about your perspective next event. I hope we're able to pull that off, but more to come. And as you know, as you have questions, uh, uh, continue to talk and we will continue to, uh, try and lead you down the path. These are extraordinary times, if nothing else. Um, Mr. Meneses, who else would like to chat with us?
Uh, Mr. Soto, I saw him raise his hand earlier. Do you still have something, Mr. Soto? You're off mute now. No, you have anything? Okay. That was a mistake. Anyone else? Carlo, anyone?
No, nobody.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. That leads us to item G, the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at ten AM on Wednesday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one and is subject to change based on a quorum. Um, which leads us towards H, the notion of adjournment. There's the need to be a motion for such to take place.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have three ayes. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, Commissioner Feinstein, welcome. We're really glad to have you on board. We are officially adjourned. And, uh, everyone, stay safe, hang in there. We're going to live to tell about this eventually. Thanks so much, everybody.
The time's ten thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.